The Columbus City Council meeting for January 2, 2024 will now come to order. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, a current copy of this act is posted in this meeting room. This evening, we will start our meeting with the appointment of our new city council member.
Item two, item two A, appointment of Cynthia Alarcon as the first ward council member to fill the unexpired term of Beth Augustine Schulte.
Council members, with your permission, the mayor would like to appoint Cynthia Alarcon. As a Columbus resident since 2007, Cynthia Alarcon has participated in various community initiatives, community engagement, and volunteer work fostering growth and positive impact. Cynthia received her undergrad degree in biology from Morningside College and her master's degree in education from the University of Nebraska-Lincoln. Since 2009, she has been employed with ESU-7 as the grant coordinator for the Title I-C migrant education program. Her professional experience has provided knowledge and education facilitating sustainable program development, enhancing public service inclusivity, and advocating for the needs of students, their families, and community. Ms. Alarcon is vice president of the Centennial Elementary PAC and serves on the Hispanic-Latino Youth Summit Committee for the Chamber of Commerce. She's a volunteer and former board member for Central Hispano and is a member of the Columbus Young Latino Professionals Associates. Cynthia is eager to contribute her skills and passion to address the needs of our community. She's committed to collaborating with city leadership, fellow councilmen, and community stakeholders to ensure continued betterment and prosperity of Columbus. Entertain a motion?
So moved. Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Item three, the oath of office. Item three A, the first ward council member for Cynthia Alarcon. Janelle will...
Please stand, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Cynthia Alarcon...
I, Cynthia Alarcon.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska...
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same...
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or for the purpose of evasion...
Or for the purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of a council member according to law...
Perform the duties of a council member according to the law.
And to the best of my ability...
And to the best of my ability.
And I do further swear...
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate...
That I do not advocate.
Nor am I a member of any political party...
Nor am I a member of any political party.
Or organization that advocates...
Or organization that advocates.
The overthrow of the government...
To overthrow the government.
Of the United States or of this state.
Of the United States or this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
And that during such time as I am in this position...
And that during such time as I am in this position...
I will not advocate...
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member of any political party...
Nor become a member of any political party.
Or organization that advocates...
Or organization that advocates.
The overthrow of the government...
The overthrow of the government.
Of the United States or of this state...
Of the United States or this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
We welcome Cynthia to our council this evening. For the public's knowledge, this appointment was made. I did want to fill the position, but with the holidays and the difficulties of getting people together and getting Cynthia coordinated and organized and feeling a little comfortable, she will sit in the meeting tonight. Definitely is now a sworn-in council member, but she will not vote. She will abstain on any items we have because she just hasn't had the opportunity to get up to speed and do any homework on anything. And she is very comfortable with that, and I think the public would be very comfortable knowing that also. So again, welcome Cynthia. All right, we'll move on to roll call. Here.
Alarcon?
Here.
Barr?
Here.
Fresh R?
Here.
Heimer?
Here.
Jablonsky?
Here.
Lopez?
Here.
Roth?
Here.
Schilling?
Here.
Mayor Bulkeley, the roll has been called.
Thank you. Council President.
Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other, as well as to all our citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Oh, say, can you see by the dark early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming Whose bright stripes and bright stars stole the perilous night? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming When the rocket's red glare, the mosquitoes in the air gave proof through the night That our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that Star Spangled Banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, just a quick shout out to the Columbus High New World Singers for that beautiful rendition of the Star Spangled Banner. We'll begin tonight's meeting. Anyone in attendance this evening that would like to come before the council and discuss any items that might be on our agenda, we'd welcome you to come to the podium. We would ask that you keep your comments to five minutes or less, and we do have a light system that would time our five-minute time limit. All right, with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item seven. Item seven, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a city council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item seven A, minutes of the December 18, 2023 city council meeting. Item seven B, minutes of the December 20, 2023 civil service commission meeting certifying Jorge Magdaleno Rodriguez and Jason Ramchek as police sergeant candidates. Item seven C, appointment of Cynthia Alarcon as public finance or two, public finance, judiciary, and personnel committee, and the community development agency. Item seven D, resolution number R-24-01 approving the agreement with Mike's Towing LLC for towing services. Item seven E, resolution number R-24-02 approving the agreement with Baylen Towing LLC for towing services. And item seven F, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and council, would you like to remove anything from consent status?
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to reports from city offices.
Item 12A, report on snow removal. Director of Public Works, Chuck Sliva.
Good evening, Mayor and council staff. Just wanted to go over a quick little review of the snow plow procedures. All this information is available on the city website. In fact, the city website is a wonderful place to go to find all kinds of information within the city. On all the departments and all the divisions, a wealth of knowledge and information is there for the public to see. To get to the snow plowing procedures, go to cityofcolumbusnebraska.gov, scroll down to departments, select Public Works, and then click on Streets Department, and then on the sidebar, you'll see snow plowing, and the information is there. So we'll go this... As always, our mission is to keep the streets safe and plowable after a snow event. Prior to a snow event, we may ice, de-ice the streets, or put anti-icing product on the streets prior to an event. If there's no rain or no moisture, that'll lower the temperature of the roads, keep them freezing, and we don't do all the streets. We just do the approaches, stop signs, curbs, viadocks, things of that nature. Then we'll go to the next slide. It's just, this is a questions with the answers that you can look at and see. It's just a lot of the questions that we typically have. When does the snow plowing begin? Typically, we go two inches, or a little more depending on the event, the forecast. It could be wind-related, or rain, or freezing rain, at what time we go out and when we start. But more than likely, under two inches, we won't go out and plow. We'll hit some trouble spots and pre-treat, things of that nature. As you go through those questions, we have a list. We do all the main streets and thoroughfares first, which would be 33rd Avenue, 23rd Street, around the hospitals, around the schools, around the churches, the main streets through streets, 8th Street, 26th Avenue. Those types of streets, we'll hit first and keep them open before we go into our plow routes, things of that nature. Cultistsacks typically are the last things to be cleaned because those are hard to get into. They got to be serviced by a loader. We've only got four loaders in the fleet, so that takes time to get around. So those are the last. You know, one of the things we ask there is people don't park in the middle because that's typically where we'll pile our snow, and then we'll come back at a later date following the storm or the event and clean out those cultistsacks. So we'll go to the next slide. This just represents the areas of the plows. We've got set up the staff and crews. They hit those certain areas so we know if there's an incident. We know who's plowing those area, what type of piece of equipment's in that area versus if it's a road grader, a snow plow, smaller one-way trucks, things of that nature. That's just a tracking device for us to use in-house. That's on there. Next slide will be, it just explains the snow emergency routes. That was established with staff. We go through, we pick the main streets. We try to stay within four blocks of each street or avenue to make it passable if we get a heavy, heavy snow, so we can try to keep at least those areas open and passable. Now, a snow emergency and a snow route. The snow route is utilized if we have a snow emergency. Typically, eight inches of snow, blowing snow, heavy, heavy snow, that's when we'll enact. The mayor, Rick Bogus, city engineer, myself, Public Works Director, we can call that snow emergency that. So it gives us a tool that keeps all the vehicles off those streets. There not supposed to be any parking on the streets on these marked routes. And we mark those routes, but just if it's marked a snow, it doesn't mean it's the first one plowed. If we have a regular snow event, we go into our routes, we do our major roads, our major thoroughfares. We do those, like I said before, 26th Avenue, 8th Street, the major streets traveled, and then we work into our areas. But if we declare a snow emergency, and we've done a couple in the last few years, so, and it does help. That's basically to get the cars off the streets so we can clear the streets and get them cleaner, quicker, and faster. So we'll go to this next, this next slide. It's somewhat interactive. It's not a plow tracker or anything like that. Not to say that it's not going to come to that eventually. We're looking at that. If there's a need or the public wants it, and they think we need to have plow trackers, we may look at that. It's out there. We may look into that. But this map, you can, if you're on the website, you can go there and click. If you're in your neighborhood, you can click your street and see those streets. It'll list the numbers. You can blow it up, the air page, and I'll cover those. Actually, I have that list. I'll go over that quick. On those yellow marks on that map, you'll see it's Highway 30 from 18th Avenue to 14th Avenue, almost 14th Avenue east. That's the new construction work that we've all learned to enjoy and deal with, and there's more to come, so stay tuned. We're just getting started. Also, 48th Avenue from 15th Street to 38th Street, the drive lines, were new, so those are not salted. Any of the approaches in that area will not be treated. 38th Street from 50th Avenue to 48th Avenue is on there. 40th Avenue from 27th Street North to Perry Village Retirement Home. And of course, the alley down here by City Hall in the north of the new community building, that's not be treated. We do have some material we can put out there if it gets really icy that's acceptable to newer concrete on a smaller scale, but we can't treat that. Signage is posted in those areas, and we just ask that the public be cautious and, you know, give yourself some time and room. We will put down sand salt, not a sand salt, salt gravel mix on that new highway and stuff to try to help with it, but you just have to really be careful with that. Now, we'll go to the snow, snow and ice removal. The city code states that homeowners and property owners, it's unlawful to push snow into the street or onto a city snow pile or a windrow. You got to keep it to your property and stuff, and that sidewalks have to be cleaned by city code within 24 hours of the event. And also, on the streets, cars must be removed from a windrow or cleared of a snow pile after that snow pile has been made or piled. You have to have that vehicle or car moved within 12 hours, within at least 10 foot away from that windrow or that snow pile. So, and this is just, if we get heavy snows, deep snows, which we hope we don't, but that is a fire hydrant there. If you have a fire hydrant on your property or on your website, see it. But to that, I do have Cleve Borger, Street Superintendent here. He can answer any questions or something that I can't answer. He's on the street. He's fighting them when the snow events happen. He's been doing a really great job with it. Other than that, I'll open it up to, but anybody's got any questions?
Do you want to clarify, the downtown businesses can push it into the street or cannot?
Downtown, yes, thank you. Downtown businesses, it is approved that they can push into our windrow or push the snow off into the street, and then we'll pick it up. We just ask that they get it a couple foot away from the curb, and if they got that sidewalk approach, to clear it out and get it to the street so we can get in with our equipment and get it removed and off the street into our piles. That is allowable in the downtown area.
Thank you.
Mr. Sliva, with any typical snow, can you tell me what the cost may, the city may incur?
That's a good question, and I'm glad you asked that because the guys put the numbers together. A typical four to six inch snow event, that's going to cost us, if we can complete it in a 12-hour time span, which most of the time we can, we can do the whole town, have the downtown done within a 12-hour span. Depends on the timing, severity of the storm, but that's usually what we see. But if 12-hour event is about $32,500 is what it would cost us. We got to rent trucks and move windrows downtown, so that, about $2,700 per hour, so.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, please, please come forward. I think we know you. Please come forward.
Beth Augustine Schulte, 2494 South 16th Street. And I just did have one question that was asked of me one time. Can citizens, if they have a plow that they can put on a four-wheeler, can they go down their own streets and take care of it, or do they need to leave everything to you guys?
No, that's best they leave because they're putting snow where it should be, and they stop, and they cause more issues and problems than if they leave a leg and don't do that practice. There's a few that do it, and that's, it's not a good practice. It's not a safe practice. And then there is, if they want to take the responsibility and have the liability on their shoulders, it's something to be considered, but no. We'd rather not see that. If they could patiently wait for us to get there, that'd be better.
Well, we had had the, we had had the storm that moved in, you know, right before, right prior to Christmas, and at the time it was coming, there was an opportu, you know, it appeared that it could have been close to maybe a major storm.
Right.
It didn't. Columbus was fortunate in that regard, but I felt it was a good timing. I think once a year, this is always a good timing, no matter what, just to bring ourselves and the public up to speed on what, you know, what are the rules and the regs? Because if you haven't gotten them, you will get calls from friends and neighbors about what is supposed to happen and why is it supposed to happen, and how come I got called or whatever. So I think it's good to be up to speed on what is required. You know, I think as Chuck said, once we get going, we really can attack it. And I know sometimes people, well, why didn't you start earlier? Why didn't, you know, I mean, a lot of this is a judgment call, and we have to leave the judgment to the people that are in charge, and, you know, they go after it when, based on their experience and based on the forecast.
I just have two minor points to make. Number one is just a safety-related issue. For parents, grandparents, daycare operators, keep kiddos out of the rideaway when they want to play in the snow, especially if plows are coming by. Very unsafe for any, I know there's fun piles in the rideaway of snow, but keep kiddos out of the rideaway. And the other one is our website is columbusne.us. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Sliva? Thank you, Chuck. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Chuck.
All right, we'll move on to new business.
Item 16A, appointment of Melissa Spearmann to the Business Improvement District Board to fill the unexpired term of Bob Stahura.
Councilman, the mayor wishes to submit the following name to you for appointment to the Business Improvement Board at the January 2, 2024 council meeting, and request that the two-week waiting period be waived. Melissa Spearmann is the owner/CEO of Mother Nature's Emporium, located in historical building in downtown Columbus. She grew up in Columbus and has now returned to become a business owner and resident. Melissa earned her bachelor's degree in architectural studies from the University of Nebraska-Lincoln and an LEEED-accredited professional certification from the U.S. Green Building Council. Ms. Spearmann has over 20 years of experience in the architectural interior design industry. Most recently, she has served as vice president for the AOI Corporation of Omaha, Nebraska, partnering with the executive team to lead and develop all of their strategic sales, design, operation, and service plans for the business unit. Melissa also has experience serving on numerous county, community boards, and professional organizations. Could I have, entertain a motion for this appointment?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 16B, appointment of Araceli Esquivel to the Board of Parks Commissioners for a three-year term.
Council members, with your permission, the mayor would like to submit the following name to you for appointment at the January 2, 2024 city council meeting, and ask that the two-week waiting period be waived. Arcilia Escaville is a Columbus resident, having been originally from Madison, Nebraska. He currently serves as a family outreach coordinator at Central Hispano. Previously, she worked as the assistant director at the Childcare Center of Madison, and also gained valuable manufacturing experience working at Beckton Dickinson. Arcilia is passionate about advocating for the well-being of children and is dedicated to ensuring that their best interests are at the forefront of decision-making. She is thrilled at the prospect of joining the park board and is eager to deepen her involvement in the city she now proudly calls home. Would entertain a motion for this appointment?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Again, I would make the comment that Arcilia came to today's park board meeting to sit in. Because of the holidays and the timing, I could not get her approved prior to the park board meeting at noon and our council meeting at 6 o'clock, so it's good to get this done. She sat in but did not participate, and she will be an active part of the park board then come February. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 16C, reallocate $50,000 from capital improvement plan number 24-10, the SCBA washer, to CIP number 24-07, ladder truck repairs. Chief Gray is here to give a brief explanation for that.
Good evening. As you're all aware, our ladder truck is currently in Minnesota for repairs. The initial quote on that was around the $160,000 mark, which we... The initial quote on that was around the $160,000 mark, which we reallocated funds last year, rolled it over into this year. They have come back, and we're currently at $65,000 for repairs, and we're going kind of around with each other about the hydraulic hose replacement for the boom, which could be an additional $135,000, $135,000. So really, this is just a way to, if it comes down to it, lessen the fiscal impact, we have money available through another CIP project that we, we haven't got any work done on, so we may use it, we may not, I just don't know. The engineer I'm working with now is in Germany, so it's kind of delayed communication back and forth, but that's kind of where we stand on it right now.
Any questions for Chief Gray?
Chief, so you've got 180, the letter says 180,000 in it now.
That should be 160, I apologize.
Okay, so, I have no clue, what is a ladder truck worth?
Well, a new one costs approximately 1.8 to 2 million to buy a new one.
I was just afraid maybe we were, having good money after bad, but...
Right, yeah, the, now through these conversations, if it's determined that these hoses will last another three to five years, I'm okay with that, but the communication I've had with him so far is they want to readdress it next year, which I'm not a fan of, if we, if it needs to be fixed, let's fix it now while it's there kind of thing, but I don't have a solid answer on the final number, I'm just trying to do everything I can to prepare for the worst.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief? All right, we would need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the relocation of 50,000 from the Capital Improvement Plan Number 24-10 to Number 24-07 be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reallocate 50,000 from 24-10 to 24-07. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 16D, plans, specifications, and estimate of costs in the amount of $1,400,000 and authorization to advertise for bids for the Storm Drainage and Concrete Improvements 2024. The plans and specs are on file in the engineering department.
Mr. Mayor, I move the plans, specifications, estimate of costs, and authorization to advertise for bids for storm drainage and concrete improvements be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve these plans, specifications, and cost estimates for storm drainage and concrete improvements. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 16E, comments from the mayor and city council members. In compliance with the Open Meetings Act, no discussion may be held on this item.
Do we have any council members with comments this evening? I have nothing to add this evening. We'll move right on to resolutions.
Item 17A, resolution number R-24-03, approving the addendum to the Interlocal Cooperation 911 Emergency Communications Equipment Sharing Agreement in the amount of $6,882.23 for operational readiness testing for the Joint Communication Center.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of Resolution Number R-24-03.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution R-24-03. Any discussion? Rachel, do you want to explain, just a quick, brief explanation?
Sure, yes, in, in March of 2023, the city council approved an addendum for us to incur these costs, it's a cost sharing that we have with eight other P S apps for our 911 equipment. In the meantime, other P S apps were getting that original addendum signed, and there was one that hadn't yet, the price dropped. And so the original addendum had a higher price written, and so we wanted the addendum to reflect the lowered cost for each agency, so.
So there's a benefit to procrastination, is what you're saying?
This time there was, not usually.
Take advantage while we can, all right. Any other discuss, thank you. Any other comments or discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. That is the end of our meeting this evening, meeting adjourned.